Good morning and welcome to the July 30th meeting of Milton Select Board. Please join me as I rise and say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We are meeting today primarily to do interviews for town council services and so we are grateful to the folks who are coming in today. The way that we are going to conduct these, I believe our colleague Megan Higerty will be with us at some point. We have a series of set questions. We're just going to kind of rotate around. We may ask you to expand on an answer a little bit.
Sure.
But I'll ask the first one, which will be to introduce yourself, your team, and your experience, and tell us about your interest in working for the town of Milton and your role in working for the town.
Sure. Well, thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to do what we love to do best and that's represent cities and towns and all the officials and citizens that make up each very unique city and town in this Commonwealth. So we appreciate the time. I have to do something that I've never had to do before and I need to apologize for Lauren Goldberg, who I can't remember a single other time this ever happened to, but she put in the calendar 8:30 today and realized when I called her that it was at eight o'clock. I've never seen her before, but she'll be here around 8:15, but it'll give you a chance to sort of get to know me, who we're proposing as the primary contact anyway. So she does apologize profusely for this and it's never happened before. I've worked as an attorney in the public sector for over 30 years, 28 years with KP Law and two and a half years before that representing a public sector union after. I always say my two and a half years with the union seem longer than my 28 years representing cities and towns, but it was really a great sort of entry into this field. At our firm, I am the head of our labor employment law group. I'm also in charge of our education law group and I also serve as primary contact for a number of cities and towns and have done so for the past 25 years. And I really enjoy that part of it too because I enjoy sort of knowing everything that's going on and all the different issues and being able to sort of build the perfect team for the town of Milton as we get to know you and you get to know us. What our firm brings more than really any other firm is the expertise of 50 attorneys who have chosen municipal law, not just as an area of law they want to practice in, but really a passion and that's what we really bring. Our firm is created to represent cities and towns. It's what we specialize in and you don't get into representing cities and towns, just like all of you, for the money, right? I mean, they're a more lucrative field and everybody at our firm has been at that crossroad where you could have taken that higher paying job, but we stay because we really love what we do. We love working with our colleagues and we love representing cities and towns, getting to know you. I don't feel there's any firm that really understands the structure of a city and town and the different layers and how they're organized and how that really goes into it. And we at our firm sort of believe in the primary, secondary contact approach. We're going to bring you the expertise and the knowledge of 50 attorneys, but we're going to deliver to you with that personalized specialized field of two to four attorneys, basically. And initially, well, we're proposing myself as the primary contact and Lauren as the secondary contact and we'll work with you and the town administrator to build the team that really fits for what your needs are from there. But you're getting two of our most experienced attorney. Lauren is the managing attorney of our firm and I think her name and reputation speaks for itself and I bring 30-plus years to the table as well. I think one of the things that we really pride ourselves, you asked about our role, is we are very aware that we are not the policymakers of this town. That's what all of you were elected to do. You've hired town administrator and department heads to help accomplish your goals. So we're not the policymakers. Our job is to help you accomplish your policy goals and the things that you want to accomplish for the town and to advise you on the legal way to do so. Sometimes we may tell you legally it can't be done, but we will do our best to look at what you want to achieve and protect you in that process and give you advice on how legally best to accomplish that goal. And that's really what we see our role to be. We believe in being very proactive, though we want you to feel comfortable to call us for five minutes and save yourself from three years of lawsuits because that's where you spend more money than you want to in your budget, let alone the time and the stress. And we are able to fight and defend vigorously, but we would rather keep you out of the fight. And sometimes that may be, sometimes we can be the one to take the bullets and keep you as the elected officials clean of that, but that is our job. We're not going to tell you, you should do this. This would be a great policy. We want to hear what your policy goals are and we will give you the legal advice on how to accomplish those in the best way possible. With that, I'm sure Lauren will give herself a brief introduction when she comes in.
We can ask her.
But yeah, I'm happy and looking forward to answering all your questions.
So the second part of the question was a little bit about your interest in working specifically with Milton.
Well, Milton is a great town. I mean, it's obviously just outside the greater Boston area so that gives a unique set of interests in being outside of the Boston, Cambridge big cities, but you still feel the effects of a lot of that. So I think that's very interesting about where you sit. You know, I think we know that every town is unique in certain ways and every city is unique in certain ways. And so we're interested, I think obviously Milton brings a lot to the table, a representative town meeting, which I think is always a very different challenge than an open town meeting. But we, I think, really enjoy the uniqueness of every community and we'd love to, like I said, work with all of you and provide the best legal advice possible.
Mr. Wallace, you want to ask another question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What you talk about was defined to me many years ago by a long-term resident of the town who was on the town government study committee, Leroy Walker. I was police chief for 10 years, long before I came into this role. And when you look out this window, you don't see it, but one of the things that does affect Milton is called urban pressure. You'll feel it, whether it's traffic, crime, whatever it is, you'll feel it. The community of Butts, 13 and a half miles of the city, three of the busiest police districts in the city. So there are so many different aspects, but you're right when you say it, it does have its effects.
Yeah, and it's a very different Milton compared to Boston, compared to City of Lynn. I do a lot of work in town of Swambskot and a lot of their issues that makes Swambskot unique is having to deal with being sort of the neighbor of two bigger cities, not Boston or Cambridge, but Lynn and Salem. And that creates a lot of unique challenges for the town of Swambskot. So we're very familiar with sort of how things that maybe not going on within the town's borders are affected by the big cities that you are near.
Let her introduce herself.
Yeah, I was going to suggest that. So we started with quick introductions. We heard about the calendar mishap, which isn't a problem at all, but please feel free to pull the mic a little bit, we have chains there for you.
I was so pleased to be 15 minutes early. I wanted to find out if I was 15 minutes late. My apologies, I am so sorry. Technology and my fingers are not what they ought to be. Well, thank you very much. I have no idea what ground you've covered so far, but I'm sure you've had an opportunity to talk to Darren.
We were just starting. Darren gave us a very good overview of the firm itself and the question was really about him and his role as well. And so if you'd like to just expand a little bit on yourself, what you see your role in this process.
Yes, thank you. So I'm sure you're aware that I am the managing attorney at KP Law. I also have a very active municipal practice and I am the lead in several municipalities. I also do backup in a number of municipalities and generally, because that's kind of my role at the firm, is to provide support to the attorneys that are dealing with interesting or challenging things that they may not have experienced the first time. Our kind of thought about having Darren and me as a team for you was that I would assist with the transition, help manage the onboarding and getting familiar with the board, town administrator, all of the staff and some of your staff, the clerk I do already know so that would be helpful. But to get a real feel for the kind of legal services that you all are looking for and the kind of relationship you're looking for, and then together with the town administrator and Darren, try to identify the right person to be your backup in the future. You know, I don't have a time limit on the amount of time I can be involved, but ultimately I think it'd be great for you to have someone else to rely on and not just me and Darren. And so I try to facilitate that at an appropriate time, but again, not with a rush in any way.
So I'll ask you this question. What's your general approach to providing town council services and how do you see your role in the town's organization setup?
Yeah. As a firm and me personally, we really see ourselves as part of your team. We don't, when people say you're outside council, we get riled up because we're not outside council. We are your council. And so we want to brainstorm with you, we want to anticipate issues, we want to do training, we want to try to give you all of the legal services that we can in advance of a calamity. You know, we really do believe in proactive lawyering and we don't throw ourselves into things where we're not asked to be involved, but when we're on the phone with the town administrator and we're talking about things that are going on, we are lucky enough to have kind of exposure throughout the state to cutting-edge issues. And we might say, oh, have you looked at your public records policy lately? Or what have you guys done in terms of your ADU bylaws and how's enforcement going and do we need to tweak things? So we're constantly looking forward. At the same time, we are never the sixth select board member at the table. We're not the sixth member of the planning board. We do not see ourselves like that at all.
Great analogy.
Sometimes when we're interviewing for a new role, that's really the biggest difference. And I guess the last thing that I would add here is that at KP, we don't represent private individuals against municipalities. We don't represent developers. That's not how we see ourselves. We are 100% public law-based, well, I'd say 99% public law-based. And I think that's really important because we always see the municipality side. We are never thinking, oh, how is this going to affect our case in XYZ town? And it's something I think that the court system really understands that when you see KP Law, you know that's what you're getting. We're not there on behalf of someone other than a municipality. And then also with the Attorney General's Office and the Supervisor of Public Records and the Elections Division and all of the offices that we interact with on a regular basis, I really think we have a great relationship with them and it's not like others don't as well. But ours is pretty strong and pretty deep and I think that gives us a lot of opportunity that we can bring to you.
Anything to add?
No, I think we talked about being proactive before and I think it's just, we want you to be comfortable with us that you'll know that a five, 10-minute phone call that you make will be the best money you've spent because it will hopefully save you from much more inexpensive damage down the line. So we really want to have that close relationship where you're always comfortable to call us. And we're available 24/7 for the most part. You'll have our cell phone numbers, you'll be able to text us, you'll be able to email us, you'll be able to call us. My wife is very used to 10:30 at night Friday call and we understand, I think what makes representing a city or town a little different to representing a private entity is we really do see every issue you face as urgent. I don't want to say every issue is an emergency, but many are. But everyone's urgent. You don't have millions of dollars to spend. If you're picking up the phone to call us, if you're emailing us, it's an urgent issue and we treat every issue as such.
Thank you. Mr. Daley, you want to go there?
Yeah, so to get a little bit more in depth in these issues and your preparation, so can you go and tell us a little bit more about how are you prepared to handle a wide variety of municipal issues and a little bit about the expertise of your staff to not only lead attorney, but to assist the lead attorney?
Yeah, I would say, I mean, I think our firm is very positioned to do that. I'm not sure there's another firm that boasts 50 attorneys who specialize in municipal law and because of the amount of cities and towns we represent, we're very able to, often we've seen the issue before. And if we haven't seen the issue before, we have the experience to see it for the first time. I think, you know, not too long ago, we went through COVID and we were at the forefront of sort of dealing with these laws that change by the day and not only bringing our knowledge and our opinions to our clients, but really helping them out in ways that we hadn't necessarily needed to before. I think we needed to also be a calming influence among the chaos. And so I think we're very positioned on whatever issue hits and let's hope we don't see COVID again or something like it. But there's just very little we haven't seen and even if I may not have dealt with that issue, I have at my fingertips 49 other attorneys who may have. And you're not going to need to call 50 attorneys. You're going to be dealing with a team of, like I said, two to three to maybe four people, depending on the specialty cases that you might have. But there's no area of law that we're not well-staffed in, whether it be land use, whether it be land use and zoning, real estate, contracts, environmental, general litigation. I know you have separate labor council, but labor and employment. We also represent some school districts and I actually represent, well, I'm the lead in several of those school districts. And that gives you another unique, listen, let's face it, come budget time, which is, what, 10 months of the year now?
Eleven.
Yeah, exactly. You know, the school-town sort of tug-of-war sometimes can really be a major issue. And so I feel like representing a couple of school districts, I'm very knowledgeable in how to sort of navigate those issues.
Yeah, and I would add just a couple of things to that. We know some of the other firms, we often hear them characterize us as the big firm and every time we roll our eyes, like we are a large firm, meaning we have a lot of resources. Like, we are a large firm, meaning we have a lot of resources. But you aren't going to interface with everyone. You're going to interface with your team, as Darren said. The difference between the depth of our bench and the depth of the other firms that you will be seeing or that you have already seen. We don't have nine people. We don't have 10 people. We literally have the state experts in every area of municipal law. You know, recently, an attorney who did a lot of appellate task board work passed away. And we have received a ton of calls immediately saying, we know you have expertise in appellate task board work. Can you help us? And yes, we can do that. When there's, you know, even in towns that we don't represent, if there's a very, you know, significant case or if there's a high stakes recount or, you know, we have the people for that. And when you look at the resumes of the attorneys, and especially when you look at the shareholders, you know, we've been practicing law for 20 years plus, every single one of us, and it's all been municipal law. And there's no way to really emphasize how much experience that we bring because of that. You know, I heard someone one time say, you know, oh, well, we only have, you know, five towns and we have 10 attorneys, so, you know, we've got it. And, you know, when you do our ratios, they're very similar. And so, you know, I think just to, our size is one of our best attributes. And the fact that we can leverage that information for you makes it extremely valuable. Our, you know, two hours of work is usually already on the backs of hundreds of other hours of work. And so when you bring us a new and challenging issue, and believe me, we know every town is different. Every situation is different. There is never a cookie cutter answer. If there were, we would have a lot more free time. That's for sure. But we do have experience that we can bring to bear. And it makes a huge, huge difference. And I think, you know, if I think about when we take over as town council in new towns, I think that's the thing that's the most surprising to the clients. It's like, you have an answer to that? You don't have to go and spend 10 hours researching? No, we don't. We're going to spend 10 hours if we need to. You know, issues like parade bylaws, you know, and solicitor peddler bylaws and panhandling. And these are constitutional issues. They raise significant issues. The Shertloff case, recently, the flag case in Boston, the Barron v. Kalenda case, the Southborough case about, you know, public participation. Those types of things, we are, we're researching that for the first time, just like everybody else. But we also are able to take that information and leverage it to the use of all of our clients. So you guys might be the front runners. You know, I know you just dealt with the MBTA zoning forever and ever. And you spent, I'm sure, a lot of money on that and a lot of angst and a lot of time. And that, you know, there's always going to be towns that have to do that. But one of the benefits from our perspective is we're able to take that work that we do for whatever town it is. And then we're able to fold that work in to the next time we deal with something like that. So I just, I do think in terms of the way our firm approaches things, you know, Darren and I, right now, as the lead members of your team, if you have litigation, we're keeping an eye on that. We're watching over that. We're making sure that it's being handled the way that it ought to be. And we're bringing in the Milton-specific thing. So, you know, if you guys say, you know, we hate doing depositions, like this person is, you know, really not going to be good at that. Well, you know, we're going to tell that to our litigators and say, you know, that person isn't going to make the best witness. They really don't want to do that. This is how we should approach it. Or you dealt with this before. Or we've talked to, you know, X, Y, or Z staff person. So we're bringing all of that in. And we're using it to help provide you guys with the legal advice that you're looking for.
Thank you. So any follow-ups? Many of our ongoing issues and potential litigation stem from land use-related issues. So we'd love to hear a little bit about your experience and the firm's ability to handle complicated land use matters. And if you have an example that you'd like to give of a successful defense of a land use body and the issues that were involved.
Yeah, so neither Darren nor I are land use lawyers. You know, if, and we had talked about this, I think, previously. We would take a look at the type of land use matters that get litigated here. And we would figure out which member of our land use team is the right person for you. We have some members that are, you know, really experienced with White Lands Protection Act stuff. We have others that are much more planning and zoning-based. And so we would take a look at that. We have a very experienced litigation practice area. Carolyn Murray, Amy Quessell, Robenstein, Alex Wisehite, all excellent, excellent land use attorneys. So again, we would want to meet with your zoning, you know, board chair, your zoning enforcement officer, the planning board chair, your planning, you know, your planner, and sit down and say, what are you really looking for here? And we'd figure out who has the most experience in the right areas for you.
And I think like your town, a very busy part of our firm is land use. So it's like you can't represent cities and towns unless you have a very strong land use department. And so we've obviously built it up that way intentionally.
Any follow-ups?
Sure, if I could.
Yes.
So I think it'd be helpful to, you know, as we're shifting from our current setup right now is kind of how you describe where we have a primary contact. And if necessary, they pull some people in. So typically in a community, would you say that if we're dealing with a bunch of land use matters, are we and staff and the planning board going directly to that person? Are we still kind of navigating through the primary contact and how that typically works?
So you would go directly to that person. But I will say this, you know, one of, I think, the beauties of our firm is we're very flexible. And we're really willing to sort of set things up that, you know, in a way that works best for you. So, you know, if you want direct contact to the land use person, you are going to get it. If you would rather work through the primary on that, you know, that can happen too. We're very malleable. And, you know, like as Lauren and I both said, you know, every city and town is different. And we have the experience and the flexibility to really shape the team and how you contact them. And, you know, we let you sort of make that determination. We'll give you advice on, if you ask, what works best. But we want to bring you the most effective legal services in the most efficient way, in a way that you want, the town of Milton wants. Because how the town of Milton may want it may be very different than, you know, how the town of Hingham wants it.
Yeah, and I'll just add as well, I think in the land use context, most of our clients do go directly to the land use lawyer. Typically, there's ongoing questions and ongoing issues. What we like to do is to be copied on the correspondence between the land use attorney and the town so that, you know, as the primary team, we can see what's going on. And we know to jump in if, oh, well, we're dealing with, you know, this as a warrant article as well. You know, what exactly are we trying to achieve here? Or we're going to need a real estate lawyer to assist with a really complicated, you know, transaction that's going to be implicated by a zoning change. So we like to be kind of in the know about what's going on. And in terms of the land use attorney themselves, again, you know, I think it's really kind of what's going on. We have a lot of experience in the 40B realm. We have a huge land court practice. And our attorneys are very well-known at the land court and very well-respected. And, you know, I think that, especially in the land court, the judges know for sure that when we come in, we're going to know the law. We're going to be able to explain it. And oftentimes, especially in the land use context, the court will say, you know, before anyone starts arguing, council, town council, what is the law in this area? And I think that's, you know, a really good indicator of kind of the overall manner in which we practice, which is, we're always going to tell you what the law is and how you choose to pursue that. And the land use attorney says, well, they're going to give you the outline of the issues. They're going to talk to you about pros and cons, pluses and minuses. But whatever decisions you make, we, you know, zealously represent those decisions. And so, you know, again, I think it's evident in every area in which we practice, but especially in our land use area where the courts really rely on us to be the ones that are going to, you know, go the straight and narrow in terms of telling them, what is the law?
Yeah, and I would just add that, you know, one of our recently retired attorneys was a land use, became a land, was with our practice, became a partner or shareholder with our practice, and then went on to become a judge at the land court. She then returned
And the presiding judge?
Yeah, the presiding judge. And then returned to us for a few years as she sort of shifted towards retirement. But, you know, so we are well-known there and well-respected.
Mr. Wallace, you want to go next?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. You are correct when, a long time, I don't even know how many years. I just saw him yesterday too. Chair of the ZBA for years. Who's a well-to-do attorney on his own, right? Always talked about land court as being such a highly specialized place. Like, you don't want to just walk in there and be, you know, baccans. You know, you want, when the judge walks in the room, to have an understanding that the lawyer representing you is well-versed in land use matters. And that, you just hit that right on the head when you said that. So my question here is, like, what would be your process for explaining complicated legal issues to non-attorneys in town, such as board members? Like ourselves, town meeting, things like that? It's common at town meeting where town council will have to explain an issue or speak to an issue?
It's a great question. And I will say, I think that one of the things that's ingrained in all of us and, you know, in our new attorneys we really train is, yeah, we are not writing you an opinion or answering one of your questions as, you know, the same way we would write to a Supreme Court judge. We want you as board members, as a town administrator, department heads, chiefs, to obviously understand exactly what we're saying in as clear a way as possible. And so we're not trying to write a legal treatise when you ask us a question. We're trying to, as simply as possible, answer your question in a way that, you know, a non-lawyer would understand. We want you to be able to look at that opinion and know exactly what the answer is. So we just have a lot of experience in doing that. And I think we also try, and you know, not every one of us is the same. But I think a common skill that we do look for when we build our firm and add to our firm are people that we can see coming to select board meetings, coming to town meetings, coming to controversial, you know, planning board hearings, which is a very different forum than a court or an arbitration or, you know, a closed matter. It's a whole skill in itself to be able to build consensus among board members, to answer a question that could come. When we get ready for town meeting, we know that a question could come. We almost know, like, as much as we prepare, there still could be a question that we don't anticipate. So you have to be able to, you know, think on your feet and answer in a way that all the town meeting members will understand. Because there's many different people, many different backgrounds, many different types of professions. And so we need everyone to be able to understand us. So that's just a skill we look for. It's just such an important part of what we do.
Yeah, I think it's evident in the way that we write our letters. And emails are the same these days. We'll give you the facts, and then we tell you the answer. In my opinion, this is the answer. And then we go ahead and explain the law and the way the law applies to the facts. And that has been a hallmark of our firm for over 40 years. It was ingrained into us when we were new at the firm. And we insist on that from all of our attorneys. And that same approach, you know, we have some clients that they want all the legal citations. You know, they sit around and, you know, unspool everything and talk about it amongst themselves. And for those clients, they're going to get all the legal citations because we have them. We don't just, we don't necessarily include all of the research in every single opinion letter. But it's there, and we're ready to talk about it. In terms of dealing with clients at board meetings and at town meeting, I mean, you know, most of us, as I said, who are leads in towns have been doing this for over 20 years. And it is part and parcel of being a true town council is to be able to stand up at town meeting and take something that's complicated and explain it in a way that people understand. You know, oftentimes after town meetings, people will like chase me out and, thank you so much. You really helped make that clear. Because it's hard stuff. It really is. It's hard to understand. Proposition two and a half, you know, at a town meeting, all people know is override bad, you know, really bad. And so being able to explain that, I mean, that's part of the fun of our job is to be able to interact with people in public settings and be able to try and help explain, you know, why we're there. What value are we bringing? And so, you know, that is, it's a really good part of the job.
And I think we've gotten, you know, and I think certain things change, you know, after COVID, the whole hybrid meetings, Zoom meetings. You know, we'll be going to meetings sometimes. It could be 1,000 people attending when you go both in person. And, you know, and these hot-button political issues that come up. I've had two issues in the last three months where, you know, Fox News nationally sent out the link to our meeting, you know, an hour before. So, you know, now it's a national issue. And it's literally going to be thousands of people who aren't going to be happy regardless of what I say. And so it's, you know, we've gotten a lot of, even new, I think the experience we had has even expanded in the last five years because, you know, it is, it's a unique. And I think we find it exciting at times. You know, we're speaking and there could be thousands of people, you know, attending that meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Daley, do you want to go?
Thank you. So you all brought up town meeting and speaking in front of that. So I'd like to know, as town councils, oftentimes you often give your opinion, unformatted situation, public setting. Attorney-client privilege, obviously a part of that could negatively impact the outcome. So how have you dealt with issues like that in other communities when you have to engage and debate on an issue?
So you're saying at a town meeting, if there's debate that comes up? So you're saying at a town meeting, if there's debate that comes up?
Right. So if you're in a public setting and you've got a certain attorney-client privilege, but a question is asked, and you have to present that to town meeting?
So, you know, I think, as I've already said, there's no way to predict every single question that can come up at town meeting. And you're a representative of town meeting, so it's maybe a little bit easier in that setting than a completely open town meeting, which we deal with a lot of as well. But I think we try to anticipate as much as we can, working closely with the town administrator, the select board, whoever is, you know, having maybe a pre-meeting with the moderator, we usually recommend, it's up to the town when they want to do that, and really kind of trying to be as prepared as possible. There still may be that curveball question, but we're never going to sit down and, you know, we're going to give the, we're going to obviously be ready to give the best answer we can. You know, obviously, sometimes there's something that's such a curveball that we have to do our best, but we're going to be in as best position as possible to be ready for any question. And as far as attorney-client privilege, because that's a great question. Sometimes somebody will stand up and say, "Well, you know, what's going to happen next? You're in this lawsuit." We are also well-versed in knowing what is attorney-client privileged information and what is not. And we will say sometimes, you know, town meeting, that's not the issue before us, it's not the, you know, Jane versus Doe matter. The issue before us is Article 12, and, you know, we can't comment on ongoing litigation, but we can say this as to the article.
Yeah. Yeah, I do think, you know, we've been at a number of meetings where settlements are being discussed, potential settlements, and, you know, people have a lot of questions. And we can only talk about what's public. Once something's filed in court, that information is public. And so, you know, that gives us at least a kind of a finger hold of what we can talk about. But we're very aware the privilege belongs to the board, it does not belong to us. We have no ability to disclose information that's attorney-client privileged, and we're very respectful of that. And, yeah, I think it's fair to say that sometimes those meetings are really uncomfortable. You know, there's a lot of times we can't give people what they want at meetings, and it's something we, you know, you kind of have to build up your tough skills for that, and different people deal with it differently. And I know that sometimes it needs to be dealt with differently. You know, at 40B hearings, it is often very argumentative. And the attorneys that handle that, they will, you know, go right back to the attorneys that come after them or the town. They need to do that. And in others, it's a matter of trying to smooth the waters and try to avoid things, you know, intensifying and getting out of control. And so, again, I think, you know, the attorneys that you're going to see have those skills and are aware of those issues. And, you know, we've talked a few times about shareholders and training, and I just, I do want to be clear, we do have newer attorneys at our firm. The skill of being a lawyer is learned from lawyers that are older than you, you know. When Darren and I started, you know, we weren't the lawyers we are today. We had the tutelage and, you know, training that the people before us gave us, and we are heavily invested in that in our firm. So there will be times when a newer attorney is doing some work on an open meeting law complaint, for example. But that's not leaving the door without us making sure that it's right. And we do have newer attorneys argue dispositive motions in court. That's the only way that they learn, and we wouldn't let them be there if we didn't, you know, go over it ahead with them and do a moot court. And we're really proud of that. You know, sometimes other firms will say, "Oh, you know, you know, they're just, you know, they'll show up on the day of the interview, but you'll never see them again." That could not be further from the truth. And I just want to make sure that we're saying that straight out. We value the training that we give to our attorneys. And, you know, I think of a number of shareholders who started out when I was already a shareholder, and they were, you know, much, much younger. They're fantastic attorneys. They are fantastic attorneys then, too. So that's something that we invest a lot of effort into because we want to make sure everybody who does anything for the town is trained to do that.
We're also very trained to, whether it be at a select board meeting or whether it be at a representative town meeting, to know what our role is. Just because a member of the public or even an attendee at a meeting may say, "I want to hear from council on this issue," we take our directive from the select board. And obviously, at a town meeting, we have to be recognized by the moderator before we could speak. But, you know, we're not going to just stand up when somebody screams, like, "We want to hear from town council on this issue." We know our role. We take directives from you at a town meeting. We can only speak if we're recognized by the moderator. And that's how we'll work with you at it, whether it be a town meeting or a select board meeting.
Thank you. So Lauren, your comments probably provide a good segue to this question. Speaking of younger attorneys and learning, can you tell us about a time when you initially gave some advice, but then later determined a different approach might be warranted to the situation? And then how did you talk to your client about that change in tactic?
I think, I'm trying to think. So we certainly have had times where the law has changed in mid-street. And obviously, that's, we look at that as sort of urgently to update you that, you know, the playing field has changed a little bit because of this change in the law. I'm trying to think of any examples where our strategy may have changed because we just maybe saw it a different way, you know, into the litigation. I mean, I can't really remember a specific example of that occurring, but I think that just knowing how our attorneys operate, we wouldn't continue down a wrong path to protect our initial strategy thought. You know, so we're always reevaluating. I mean, I can't really think of a specific instance other than I'm always evaluating a strategy in a given matter. And if I feel that there needs to be a shift, even if it may be a shift away from what I initially advised, I did just think of an example, actually. I'm not going to hold back on that. So I will give you an example. We took over, we were not here when the problems started in this town. It was under separate counsel, not with our firm. But there was a lawsuit filed by a current employee for discrimination, for retaliation, a number of things. And the town really did side with the employee, the select board did. And so when we were talking about different settlement strategy, the initial advice was, "Listen, there needs to be a resignation with this employee because these..." I said, "In my experience, I've never seen, it's very, it's very, very rare that a bad relationship gets fixed, especially one that's gone to litigation at a number of levels. There were a number of pieces of litigation." So I said, "The only way I would advise you to settle this is with the employee's resignation." The employee did not want to resign at all. And we went through many talks, and we, you know, I basically said, "Well, I know I was here several times in the last six months advising you, don't settle unless the employee resigns, but it's just not going to happen." And they did not want to go to litigation. The insurance company did not want to go to, nobody wanted to go to litigation. I said, "So I think this is an example, you know, I have reasons to believe that maybe this will be the one outlier that will work." And, you know, so I had to get them to approve a settlement that was exactly the opposite of what I had been telling them for several months. And knock on wood, so far it's actually worked out pretty well, that employee's actually been promoted and may be promoted again. But, you know, I advised, I didn't keep my original advice because of a pride issue. I completely switched up, and I knew the select board wanted a resolution above anything, and that's what they got.
Yeah. I was going to say, I think what we see mostly with, you know, advice in litigation is that we might come to the board and say, "Here's what the law says, here's what the facts are. We think this path is the least, the path of least resistance and the least risk. This path may have more risk and be, you know, more expensive, more time-consuming, et cetera." But whichever path you choose, we're going to represent you, as though that was the only path. And that does happen quite a bit. And I think because select boards especially, and other land use boards as well, sometimes there's a principle that's more important than getting out of it quick and cheap. And that's, you know, we completely respect that. And it's our job, you know, to tell you what the options are. But you're the decision-makers, you're the policymakers, and we have great respect for that. And, you know, even when we think something's dicey, as long as we've put out there to you, "We think this could lead to trouble, here's what you need to be aware of." And you say, "Yeah, we understand the risk, but this is how we want to proceed," then that's what we do.
And we're also used to, sometimes the policymakers change, you know, mid-case. You know, an election comes and there's a new board, and they say, "We want to do the exact opposite of what the prior board did." We're not going to stand there and say, "Well, you know, we're going to walk away because that's embarrassing that we argued the case one way, and now you want to argue it a different way." No, we're very used to it. We want to help, like I said, you are the policymakers, we help you get there.
I think I just, Darren raised a great point, and I just want to kind of hammer that home. We always are straight about the law because we have to be. We represent boards for 20 years. You can't do what one board wants and then do what the next board wants, and then do what the next board wants unless you're saying straight what the law is. So the policy decision may be how you decide to pursue something, and that is the board's choice. And that may change from board to board to board. But the underlying law, the underlying advice, this is what the law says, here's what the risks are, that does not change. And I think, you know, that is part of why many of the clients we have trust us in the way that they do because they know we're not giving them an answer that they just want. We're giving them the right answer, and then how they choose to pursue that is up to them.
Thank you. We have one final question, Mr. Wells, if you want to take it.
So, I'm sure you already know this. We've had same legal counsel here for nearly four decades. As I said in a prior interview, I was a rookie policeman when that firm came on board here. We had for years, I had in-house counsel for years, we referred to as town council. And it was shortly after a significant 1983 case that the town moved to bring on, onboard a firm to represent. The primary contact, primary town council, for all the time for probably over 30 years, was also a resident. He was deeply ingrained here. I'll be remiss if I do not say that I've not had a deep awareness, and I've been on both sides of the table with them, particularly in my days when I was in the police union and you're bargaining for contracts. And then you went to management as a deputy chief, and then ultimately as chief, and now I've been in the select board, I believe, nine years. So if this change were to happen, how would you structure a transition period to, like, minimize issues and get to know, you know, our community and the team here that handle the day-to-day operations of administering government in this town on a daily basis? As you noted in your early comments, it's a very unique, I've been around the world and then some. I always come back to just how unique 02186 is.
I mean, I think there's a number of steps we can take, and Lauren can elaborate. But obviously, getting as much information as we can from your current town council is imperative and as soon as we can to be able to go through it. But then it's also obviously meeting with the town administrator, meeting with the department heads that he says are important to meet with. Obviously, we want to meet with the select board and other boards where, so they can get to know us as well. And really just obviously getting as much information as, what are your current cases? What are the current issues facing the town that they're most concerned about? Or what are all the issues facing the town? And, you know, we're not going to bill for all that transition time in getting up to speed on where you currently are on all these issues. And really just establishing a rapport, you know, certainly with the town administrator, and if there's other people that, you know, some of that may come over time, obviously. We all work with a lot of chiefs and, you know, other department heads. But, you know, we're going to obviously spend a lot of time with the town administrator. We'll certainly offer ourselves, we never force ourselves on you, but offer ourselves to come to whatever board members, board meetings you want, to give legal update, to talk about different cases that are ongoing and different legal issues that are ongoing.
Yeah. I think the way, kind of in practical terms, that it happens is we come here as much as you'll let us come here. We want to come to department head meetings. We want to come to a zoning and a planning and a conservation. We want to attend some select board meetings. We want to, you know, meet with, as Darren said, the key department heads. What's on their list, what's their priorities? You know, what's valued here? Because every town is different. And so we can bring our other experience in, but we need to hear from you about what it is that you want and you need. We love to do trainings, like open meeting, public records, conflict of interest law trainings towards the beginning because that gives us an opportunity to be here when there's no drama, where people are really just, you know, showing up because they care about the service that they do for the town. That's a great opportunity to meet and to ask questions and just get to know people. So, and we do all of that at no charge, as, you know, across the board. And the reason is, for us, this is a long-term investment. You know, we're not in it to come in and be here a couple of years and say, "Well, thanks," and then leave. You know, we really see bringing a new town on as, you know, bringing a client into our family. And, you know, it sounds a little trite, but it's true. And I think sometimes after interviews, we look at each other and say, "Gosh, we were so, you know, positive and optimistic." But we really believe in what we do, and we really believe that we bring something really important. And I think establishing those relationships from day one is the way to go. It's the way to start things off right. And then, you know, we would look at other things, like, how do you want your bills to look? And, you know, what is the access to council policy? And, you know, whose questions, whose calls should we take? And whose calls shouldn't we take? And how do we get permission from that for that? And, you know, one of the things that we offer as well is, you know, like a 15 to 30-minute, one-time-a-week, no-charge meeting, as long as you want it for. And some clients, I do that with, one of my clients, I've been doing it for probably the past five years because it just turned out to be the best way to keep up with what's going on. I get to hear about, you know, Town Day and about, you know, the issues that happened over at Town Hall when it was someone's birthday. And that makes a huge difference. It makes a huge difference in what we can do. It also gives, you know, the town administrator an opportunity to say, "Hey, I have this thing. I just want to run it by you," without it being on the clock, as it were. And then the other thing that I think is great is that, you know, let's say you had a big public records issue that was going on, you could say to the town clerk or the records access officer, "Why don't you come with me to this meeting? Let's take care of it then." So those are several of the ways that we try to make that transition a start at establishing a relationship right away, not just a switch of, you know, who's going to be answering questions about town clerk issues.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board?
I think that's the end of our questions.
Thank you very much.
You have four minutes to spare.
Well, thank you so much. We really appreciate it. And again, I was 15 minutes early for the 8:30. No, I very much appreciate it.
We already forgot about that. Definitely, your remarks definitely loosened me. Maybe forget all of them.
Well, thank you, thank you.
We really appreciate your time, thank you.
Absolutely.
Good to see you again.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, too.
Nice to meet you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you for your questions.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Very grateful. Nice to meet you.
Thanks.
It's the third time.
Yeah. Good to see you. Take care.
Yeah, why don't we take a quick break? We're adjourned for the moment, or on pause for the moment.
Can you pause?
Yeah, go ahead. I think you just tap it quick.
Return mayor.
Was that them? Oh, they were in there. They were in that room.
Yeah, they were just waiting in there. And we're back to order here.
Hi, Ben.
Hi, Ben. Nice to meet you.
Lisa, nice to meet you.
Hi, Adam Costa.
Richard Lawson.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Winston Daley.
Winston Daley.
Nice to meet you, Winston.
How are you?
Good.
Great to meet you.
You know what Chaplin is? Do you know what Chaplin is?
Yeah.
He's just like the guy.
You can sit here at the table if you want. If you're not close enough to the mics, the guys will come in and shove them in your face. Thank you again for joining us this morning.
My pleasure.
So we have a couple of questions here written down. We're going to just rotate around.
Sure.
And the first question is probably the most obvious one, but we'd love to have an introduction to you, your team, your experience, and your interest in working for Milton.
Sure. So I'm Lisa. I'm one of the founding partners. And with me today is Adam Costa, also one of the founding partners. At our initial interview, I had Jay Tallerman, who is the third founding partner. And I bring Jay in. He's actually just got out of knee surgery, so that's why he's not here today.
We heard.
So has everybody, so it's fine. So Jay and I would kind of serve together as town council. So you always had a senior member of the firm available to you to answer questions, for department heads to answer questions and things of that nature. Let me tell you a little bit about the firm. So we have three offices, New Report, Milis, and New Bedford. Mostly they're located because it's where our employees work. And so instead of making everybody drive to one place, because we're all over the state, we have offices close to where people live. And we do primarily municipal law. We have a real estate conveyancing practice as well, but that's very important, because there's a lot of real estate conveyancing in municipal law as well. And we do a little bit of private development work, too, around the state. Mostly I do a number of permitting jobs in the New Report area, in towns that we don't represent. And I started this firm actually as our previous firm, Blatman, Bobrowski, and Mead in 2004, with the goal of really providing a different kind of attorney or legal services to municipalities. I'm a former mayor of the city of New Report and really struggled initially with how the city solicitor worked in the city. We didn't have an in-house counsel. New Report's too small. But found a firm that was willing to come in on a regular basis and do office hours and kind of be a part of our conversations as we were trying to make decisions on things that were important to the city. So we knew ahead of time what the ramifications of those decisions were, and if they were wrong, how to do it right, or at least as well as we could, without suffering the legal consequences. And so my goal was to kind of put the word council back into town council services and provide that kind of service to our communities. And so we think we've been pretty successful at doing that. When we originally started in 2004, we were primarily land use special counsel to municipalities across the Commonwealth. In 2007, we started doing general town council work. Our first client was the town of Ashland, which I'm proud to say I'm still a town council in today. And I do weekly office hours out there. And so one of the things that we offer to our municipalities is regular office hours, so that we can meet with department heads, they can come in on an efficient and regular basis to ask questions. We can meet with the leadership to help, you know, discuss policy and the legal ramifications of that. And the other aspect of that is how we, what we propose for our fees for communities. And we propose, basically you can have any kind of fee you want, but we propose a flat fee, which is inclusive of everything, including litigation. We propose a flat fee that is not inclusive of litigation, which is charged an hourly rate, or we're happy to charge you a straight hourly rate as well. But what we find is with the flat fee, people are less hesitant to pick up the phone and call us, because they don't hear the clock ticking on the other end. And that helps us prevent litigation. And I'm going to let Adam pick it up here, because he is one of our lead litigators. But even though we make a lot of money with litigation, what we try to do is prevent litigation with our communities, because it costs a lot of money.
That's right. So thanks again for having us today. So yes, I manage a fair amount of litigation for our various municipalities. Litigation's inevitable. I'm not going to promise you that if you appoint us as town council, we can prevent all litigation. It's just not the world that we live in. We do try to be proactive, consistent with the approach that Lisa just described to you, where we're working cooperatively on a day-to-day and week-to-week basis, not just with municipal officials, but with the members, the volunteers on your various boards, your zoning board of appeals, your planning board, your conservation commission, your board of health. Much litigation in municipalities is land use litigation. It's just the reality of it, appeals of decisions that are issued by those various boards. I think that positions us well to represent our municipal clientele, because as Lisa had said before, we started out representing municipalities as special counsel on land use matters. That was our expertise. Former partner Mark Bobrowski, who was a partner with our firm for years, wrote the state handbook on land use and zoning in Massachusetts, and I learned a lot of what I know from him. And so much of what I did for the first three, four, or five years of my practice was sitting with zoning boards, sitting with planning boards and conservation commissions, on everything from complicated special permits for shopping plazas or shopping malls, to Chapter 40B comprehensive permit developments, done quite a bit of work with Chapter 40R, Chapter 43D, priority development sites, in an effort to encourage industrial and commercial development. So we always suggest, and our proactive approach, is that we would become involved during the permitting process in an effort to try and stave off litigation. Again, you can't always stave it off, because a butters will appeal and you can't control that. Not every board is going to be convinced that it ought to grant a permit, and not every permit ought to be granted. And so there are going to be instances where permits are denied, or permits are granted with conditions and neighbors are dissatisfied, and there will be litigation. With litigation, we answer to you. You're the select board. And so whether we're representing the zoning board, or the planning board, or any other agency of the town, ultimately the buck stops with you. And so what we typically do in municipalities with respect to litigation is we meet with some frequency, in some communities it's on a monthly basis, others it's a quarterly or a biannual basis, with the select board to provide updates on legal matters that are pending litigation, and the status of that litigation, and what directives we are obtaining from the board. I represent communities. We represent communities where the select board takes a hands-off approach and gives the authorization to represent, let's say, a ZBA in defending a special permit, and then says, only come to us if something changes. But otherwise, you have our go-ahead to meet with the ZBA as often as you need and to represent them until the conclusion of the litigation. In other instances, boards want to take a more hands-on approach and meet with us with greater frequency, so that they can provide some greater guidance and attempt to maybe resolve that litigation short of a trial or a dispositive motion, which of course saves money for the municipality. Another portion of litigation in municipalities is administrative agency practice. I think that's probably something you see a lot of. Pelo Tax Board, Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission, Housing Appeals Committee, OADR, which is an agency at Mass DEP. A lot of litigation ends up in the hands of these administrative agencies, so that's something that we do a lot of as well. I have experience in all those forums. And again, we would handle that sort of litigation the same way. One thing Lisa didn't touch upon, and it's separate from litigation, but it goes back to this proactive approach, is the points of contact that we offer our municipalities. And Lisa's here because she has proposed to be one of your two points of contact. The other is Jay Tallerman, who met with you before but wasn't available today. All of our attorneys are available to you. We have 17 attorneys in the firm. We have experienced and less experienced associates. We have other partners who are equally experienced or more experienced. And so certainly you have access to all of our attorneys at any time. The idea behind a principal, or in this case, two principal points of contact, is that you know you can reach one of those individuals when you need them, and you can funnel whatever questions, whatever work you have through them, without feeling as if you have to manage a whole law firm of partners or associates. And so we will certainly draw upon the experience of our various associates, various partners. A lot of experience is different. We have a litigator, one of our, not so new anymore, but been with us for about three years, one of our associates, was litigating med malpractice cases for years and came to us and has since been litigating for us as an experienced litigator. When I have questions about litigation practice, because my litigation's only about a third of my practice, so when I have intricate questions about, well, how do I structure this interpleater action? I call Matt and say, Matt, you done this before? And he says, I've done it 15 times. Here's how we do it. You have questions about marijuana, you're going to call one of the two attorneys in our office. Liz has been reviewing host community agreements for our communities for five or six years now. You have questions about accessory dwelling units, which has been a big topic in the past year or so, since the new legislation was adopted at the end of 2024. We've got a couple of attorneys that have been reviewing those ad nauseam for our municipality. So you'll be able to draw upon the experience of our various partners and associates, but you're going to be able to reach that, one of those two points of contact as needed on a day-to-day, week-to-week basis.
Mr. Lawson, do you want to go next?
Thank you. So what's your, you kind of answered this a little bit to how your general approach is to providing town council services. How do you view your role within the town organization as a whole? How do you view the role of town council? I mean, not every two communities are the same, but how do you view it?
Yeah, so I think it goes to how I originally explained it. You know, we try to be a part of the organization, right? We want people to feel comfortable contacting us, asking questions to prevent problems or help them do their day-to-day jobs. And so one of the reasons we do regular office hours is so that we have that familiarity. We're part of the team. We certainly don't do policy. We know where that line is. But, you know, we, particularly Jay and I and Adam, you know, we have a lot of experience and we've seen a lot. And so if you have a proposal that's new to you, we might say, ooh, you've got to be careful. You might want to try it this way or that way. So we want to be accessible. We want you and your team to feel like they can reach out to us, to be part of the town organization. And I think that's really important. I think that goes to the basis of our success with our communities as well, is that if you feel like you can pick up the phone and ask a question, you're going to prevent a problem or get an answer so you can answer somebody else, right? But if you feel like, ooh, it's May and our legal budget is running really tight, and I don't know if we can press that matter right now, well, that may not be good for you, right? So we want to be accessible. We want to be part of the team, and that's how we view ourselves as part of your town.
We also appreciate the reality of local politics. And so we were just discussing--
What's that?
Right. You don't have any idea what that is.
We were just discussing an unnamed community while we were waiting today's meeting, where we were asked for, I was asked for advice. It was actually a couple of weeks ago. Lisa was on vacation. I was asked for advice. And the advice I had to give, my objective answer to the question, was not something that I wanted to provide in writing to the municipality, because it was not going to be to their liking. It was not that what they had done was correct. It was, hmm, maybe not so much so. And so I didn't. I picked up the phone. I had the conversation. And I said, if you want a persuasive opinion, I can argue this, I can argue that. I still have concerns that these arguments would prevail if we were to have to litigate this issue, but I can issue you an opinion that makes this persuasive argument. If you want an objective opinion, my objective opinion is going to be X and not Y. And you're not going to like that, because X is not in your favor, but you tell me what it is that you want. And they said, thank you very much. We'd like nothing further. And we hung up the phone, and they took my advice, and they could proceed as they so chose. So we realized that that's the reality of municipal government, municipal politics. We're going to give you good advice. We're going to give you objective advice. Whether we put that advice in writing, whether we ultimately are going to be asked to defend that case or defend a different approach to that same question, a more persuasive approach, that is maybe you determine as the policymakers is in the best interest of the town of Milton, that's up to you.
Thank you.
Mr. Daley?
So this is going to go a little bit what you've shared previously, but can you share a little bit more about how are you prepared to handle a wide variety of municipal issues? And go a little further into your expertise of your firm and your staff, and how this works with the lead attorney or main contact?
Yeah, sure. So, you know, we all know that none of us can know everything, right? We would be lying to you if we stood here and said that. But we do have people in the firm who have different expertise on just about everything in municipal law. But one of the reasons, to be honest with you also, that we really like what we do is, there's something always new happening in municipal law. And so we also have the ability to get those answers for things that we don't know. And so as I said a little bit ago, you know, we have 17 attorneys, and we're constantly adding attorneys, right? So we have 17 attorneys. They all have different expertise. We know what those attorneys are. We each have our own expertise. So I do contracting, procurements, general municipal law, town meeting work, right? I don't litigate. I just, that's not what I do. I do land use law. So I have all of that expertise. But then, as you want to drill down, if you need a host community agreement reviewed or a cannabis question answered, I immediately pull in Liz, because I know it can be done in an efficient manner, and she's going to get you the right answer, right? If you need a marijuana, excuse me, a ADU question, I'm going to be able to answer the ADU question. If it's an odd question, I might call in Adam and Jay and like noodle it around a little bit. But we have the expertise in the firm to be able to answer your questions. And the convenience is, is that you don't have to figure out how that person is, right? That's my job. That's why you have one or two points of contact.
It's a balance. I know our competition, because we see the same firms in these interviews in different communities, and I see some of the paperwork on the desktop.
We're all the same, right? There's a handful of us.
So you've got small firms. You've got three, four, or five attorney firms. You've got the largest municipal law firm in Massachusetts. And we're somewhere in the middle. And we think we're sort of in a sweet spot, and we varied in size a bit. I mean, we were smaller five or six years ago. We're larger than we were, but we're not nearly as large as some of the larger firms. But it's a balancing act, because if you're too small, you don't have that expertise in-house. And so you're researching ad nauseam every municipal law question you get. People often ask, what's municipal law? And I say, well, it's everything that comes across the desk of the town administrator or the town manager, and that can be virtually anything. And there are some things that might go to insurance council and other things that might go to labor council, but the rest of it comes to general town council. And so we can't be experts in all of those things. We need to know where to get the answers. But it helps to have experience on your staff. And so when you have three or four or five attorneys, you don't have that experience. On the flip side, when you have 45 or 50 attorneys, you have that experience in-house. But then the question that I often hear asked, and the critique that I hear as well, what does that mean in terms of who we're going to see coming in the door when we want an attorney? Is it going to be somebody we've never seen before, one of the rotating cast of characters that we see in our community? And so we try to provide you with face recognition. You're going to have your two points of contact. You're going to get to know the other attorneys in the firm as you work with us over the course of the coming years, if you choose us as your town council. But you're also going to have the benefit of us not just being restricted to two or three or four attorneys or being a sole practitioner, but having that expertise over the, you know, 15 to 20 attorneys that we have at any given time.
And I just, I want to just kind of wrap this up. One of the things that we also are pretty good at is, because we're small enough, and I know everybody in the firm, obviously, and I have regular contact with all of them, even though we're in three groups, we have the firm divided in groups. Like, so we have a contracting and procurement group, we have a labor group, we have a real estate group, and a litigation group. And so those groups meet regularly, like tomorrow afternoon, I'm going to have a contracts and procurement meeting with everybody in the firm that works on that. And so what the purpose of those are, what are you facing that's new this week? Do you have any appeals that you're dealing with at the AG's office? Any contract procurement challenges? And any unique things that have come up? So we try to, and then go down the list of the priority items for our communities, so we make sure that they're being done. So we do that regular communication, so that we feel much smaller than what we are or like we're in one office as opposed to spread out. But I think it's beneficial to the communities as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And so you have alluded to this earlier, about the number of land use-related cases that come before towns. So be curious to hear a little bit about, if you want to expound on your answer from earlier, and then also if you want to provide an example of a successful defense of a land use body and what the issues were in the matter.
So I'm going to let Adam deal with the success, but let me tell you, one of the things that I think that is beneficial, particularly Jay, Adam, Brian, and I, and Steve Chaplin, actually Steve is on his planning board, he's the chair of his planning board in his community, right? So a number of our members are actually on various boards in their own communities, so that they have that experience as well, is that when we sit with planning boards and zoning boards, one of the things we're thinking about is, what's the impact of the decision down the road? How can the building inspector or building commissioner enforce this decision? How does the town make sure that it gets the benefit of all the promises that are being laid before it by the applicant, right? So we have experience, because we're on the private side. We do plenty of work on the private side, and we know what that, how that's important. And we know--
So, you know, none, we all know that none of us can know everything, right? We would be lying to you if we stood here and said that. But we do have people in the firm who have different expertise on just about everything in municipal law. But one of the reasons, to be honest with you also, that we really like what we do is, there's something always new happening in municipal law. And so we also have the ability to get those answers for things that we don't know. And so, as I said a little bit ago, you know, we have 17 attorneys and we're constantly adding attorneys, right? So we have 17 attorneys, they all have different expertise, we know what those attorneys are, we each have our own expertise. So I do contracting, procurements, general municipal law, town meeting work, right? I don't litigate, I just, that's not what I do. I do land use law. So I have all of that expertise, but then as you want to drill down, if you need a host community agreement reviewed or a cannabis question answered, I immediately pull in Liz, because I know it can be done in an efficient manner and she's going to get you the right answer, right? If you need a marijuana, excuse me, a ADU question, I'm going to be able to answer the ADU question. If it's an odd question, I might call in Adam and Jay and like noodle it around a little bit. But we have the expertise in the firm to be able to answer your questions. And the convenience is, is that you don't have to figure out how that person is, right? That's, that's my job, that's why you have one or two points of contact.
It's, it's a balance. I, I know our competition because we see the same firms in these interviews in different communities, and I see some of the paperwork on the desktop-
We're all the same, right? There's a handful of us.
You've got small firms, you've got three, four, five attorney firms, you've got the largest municipal law firm in Massachusetts, and we're somewhere in the middle. And we think we're sort of in a sweet spot, and we varied in size a bit. I mean, we, we were smaller five or six years ago, we're larger than we were, but we're not nearly as large as some of the larger firms. But it's, it's a balancing act, because if you're too small, you don't have that expertise in-house, and so you're researching ad nauseam every municipal law question you get. People often ask, what's municipal law? And I say, well, it's everything that comes across the desk of the town administrator or the town manager, and that can be virtually anything. And there are some things that might go to insurance council and other things that might go to labor council, but the rest of it comes to general town council. And so we can't be experts in all of those things, we need to know where to get the answers, but it helps to have experience on your staff. And so when you have three or four or five attorneys, you don't have that experience. On the flip side, when you have 45 or 50 attorneys, you have that experience in-house, but then the question that I often hear asked, and the critique that I hear as well, what does that mean in terms of who we're going to see coming in the door when we, when we want an attorney? Is it going to be somebody we've never seen before, one of the rotating cast of characters that we, we see in our community? And so we try to provide you with face recognition, you're going to have your two points of contact, you're going to get to know the other attorneys in the firm as you work with us over the course of the coming years if you choose us as your town council. But you're also going to have the benefit of us not just being restricted to two or three or four attorneys or being a sole practitioner, but having that expertise over, over the, you know, 15 to 20 attorneys that we have at any given time.
And I just, I want to just kind of wrap this up. One of the things that we also are pretty good at is, because we're small enough, and I know everybody in the firm, obviously, and I have regular contact with all of them, even though we're in three groups, we, we have the firm divided in groups, like, so we have a contracting and procurement group, we have a labor group, we have a real estate group, and a litigation group. And so those groups meet regularly, like tomorrow afternoon, I'm going to have a contracts and procurement meeting with everybody in the firm that works on that. And so what the purpose of those are, what are you, what are you facing that's new this week? Do you have any appeals that you're dealing with at the AG's office? Any contract procurement challenges? And any unique things that have come up? So we try to, and then go down the list of the priority items for our communities, so we make sure that they're being done. So we do that, regular communication, so that we feel much smaller than what we are or like we're in one office as opposed to spread out, but I think it's beneficial to the communities as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And so you have alluded to this earlier about the number of land use-related cases that come before towns. So be curious to hear a little bit about, if you want to expound on your, on your answer from earlier, and then also if you want to provide an example of a successful defense of a land use body and what the issues were in the matter.
So I'm going to let Adam deal with the success, but let me, let me tell you, one of the things that I think that is beneficial, particularly Jay, Adam, Brian, and I, and Steve Chaplin, actually Steve is on his planning board, he's the chair of his planning board in his community, right? So a number of our members are actually on various boards in their own communities so that they have that experience as well, is that when we sit with planning boards and zoning boards, one of the things we're thinking about is, what's the impact of the decision down the road? How can the building inspector or building commissioner enforce this decision? How does the town make sure that it gets the benefit of all the promises that are being laid before it by the applicant, right? So we have experience because we're on the private side, we do plenty of work on the private side, and we know what that, how that's important. And we know from an applicant's side, excuse me, from a town's side, how important it is to have those conditions clear. Adam made a comment earlier about the enforcement of decisions. And so one of the things we have found is, when we go into a community, everybody's like, well, how do I enforce this? They said at the meeting, you know, two years ago when they were doing this, that they would put up these arbivieties, and they've never put up the arbivieties, but guess what? The condition isn't in the decision, right? Even though they represented it. So we try to make sure those kinds of things are in our decisions so that they're enforceable and defensible when you need them to be, so the community gets the benefit of the special permit or whatever applications before it. We have plenty of success stories, I'm going to let Adam talk about that.
Sure. So I mean, I'll give you a couple of examples of recent successes. At any given point in time, I probably have appearances in 75 to 100 land court, Superior Court cases, occasional housing court cases, as you can appreciate, representing primarily municipalities. I am not active in all of those cases. A butter appeals are typically defended by the applicant as the vested, party with the vested interest, and most municipalities, unless they have some vested interests of their own, will take a backseat and allow, allow the private parties to litigate those cases. But we had a case spanned over a period of about a year and a half or so in the town of Lunenburg, one of the communities that we represent, a more rural community than Milton for sure. But Lunenburg was faced with a, a controversial Chapter 40B application made to its zoning Board of Appeals. It was for a sizable development, certainly for a community of Lunenburg's size, about 200 units of housing, in, in the midst of a subdivision that had recently been litigated and ultimately approved through a settlement that allowed for another 300 homes to be built. And so it was going to be a sizable development in a community of only about 10,000 people. The developer was proposing the extension of water and sewer lines to this development, the only way that frankly, 200 units could be built on this site. The problem is, it was outside of the independent water district, and it was beyond the boundaries of the sewer service area that the town had voted at town meeting. And of course, the developer argued, well, you have the ability to waive those provisions, that's the essence of Chapter 40B, waivers are exceptions, the town can waive these things. And I said to the ZBA, I don't think you can waive these things. These are not the sorts of land use regulations that are typically waived, bylaws or ordinances, local rules and regulations. This is an issue of extending a sewer line beyond the service area that was voted by town meeting, and that process was created through special legislation that created your sewer commission, and same thing with respect to the water district. And so we litigated this case at the HAC, sort of a unique procedural posture where they denied it on those grounds alone, and then there was an interlocutory appeal by agreement to the Housing Appeals Committee. Very hard for municipalities to win at the Housing Appeals Committee. If any of you have experience with Chapter 40B, you'll know that, that the success rates of municipalities is somewhere in the 10 to 15% range, developers win the rest of the time. So I was proud to draft this motion and ultimately succeed in getting a ruling from the HAC that the ZBA was right to deny the, the application on that basis. So that's one example. Another case, I won't get into too many details, but town of Ducksbury, where we're not town council, but we do act as special land use council. We inherited a case from, that had been handled by town council, the town was, don't want to put words in their mouth, but apparently dissatisfied with the representation, sought special counsel to sort of pick things up. I was appointed, we were appointed as town council, special council. And I've been litigating that case for about four years now. It involved a comprehensive permit also that was granted by the zoning Board of Appeals back in 2003. Litigation ensued, it was issued in an amended form in 2006, more litigation ensued, there was a settlement agreement reached in 2012, and the condition of that agreement was that the developer would not seek to modify, either through the ZBA process or the HAC process, would not seek to modify certain enumerated conditions, there were a list of 20 conditions that they would not seek to modify. You can guess what happened, fast forward to 2021, and there was an application to modify those conditions. And so the town sued for breach of contract, because settlement agreement is a contract. There was a countersuit, there was initially a special motion to dismiss under the state's anti-slap statute. The developer argued that we were affecting their rights to participate in the public process, we fended off that successfully, that was appealed to the appeals court, we were successful in defending that in the appeals court. The matter then went back to the Superior Court on the merits, we won on summary judgment, that went to the appeals court, and that case was just dismissed about four weeks ago. So number of years of litigation, I think I, that started in 2021, so 2025, about four years of litigation, but we got a, a successful outcome for the, for the town, so.
You're fortunate here, we're in MWRE community, so it's, many of the communities outside of MWRE districts, water and sewer are real, real issues. You can, you could have land to build 10,000 units, but if you can't get water and sewer to them-
It's, it's the infrastructure issue, it really is. I mean, that's, we could talk about policy here, right? It's not the housing issue, it's the infrastructure issue.
Absolutely.
You can't build housing if you don't have the infrastructure, right? So, and nobody has money for the infrastructure and/or resources necessarily. We have, we have a case on a really small town that we represent right now, we have a 40B on appeal because it was denied because of water and sewer, because the state wouldn't increase the water withdrawal or the water discharge permits, for 10 years they haven't, right? And so they're still having to receive comprehensive permit applications, and it was denied, it was 140 units, something like that, because we, there's no water and sewer, and the state won't lift the, you know, the withdrawal permits and the discharge permits. And so here we sit.
What's per-
Mr. Wells, you want the next question?
I'm, I'm becoming enthralled in there. About where I'm at.
See the gears turn.
So for full disclosure, I'm the state rep for the 7th Norfolk.
Oh, there you go.
So I sit on municipal and regional government, so I've sat in more hearings in the past seven months on issues, whether it's 3A, 40B, on water and sewer and land use. It's just, people don't understand, infrastructure is such a big issue.
It's really, it's really the infrastructure issue, and I was, I was interested to read this morning in the Globe that a bipartisan piece of legislation out of the Senate, one of the sponsors is Senator Warren, to provide federal, I know this is amazing, federal funds for infrastructure related to development of housing, which is the first time I've really seen that in, in a long while. But that's really the problem with developing housing. I mean, you know this, you sit, if you sit on that committee, you, communities don't have infrastructure.
No.
And they don't have the money to build the infrastructure. And then if they do, is the resource there to allow them to, to do the infrastructure?
It's true.
Right.
Okay, we don't have enough hours to discuss this, so.
We'll go to coffee sometime.
We have formal session today, so I, so what would be your process for explaining legal issues to, to non-attorneys, like other boards, town meeting members, things of that? And they will come up, it's definitely a thing that will come.
I, I think that's, I think communication is probably one of our hallmarks. We're all, it's really interesting, you know, we're, we're like all regular people, we're lawyers, right, for sure, and we can, I can talk lawyer jargon to you all day long, and Adam can probably talk it better than me. But that's not really how you get across the point about what is the legal analysis, really, when you're talking to people who haven't necessarily, you know, read the cases. And so I think that as, as we are part of the community and get to know people, and you sit down and have casual conversations, that's really where the communication happens. And so even at town meeting, when you stand up in town meeting to address a question, if we have to stand up at town meeting, and our goal is never to stand up at town meeting, the goal is to, to describe something succinctly and in as plain language as possible and not make it convoluted. And I think we kind of have that as a rule across the board, so when you're sitting in a zoning board meeting and somebody asks a question of council for the zoning board, you know, we don't go into this litany of, well, in the case of X versus Y, we explain the practical effects of it or what the legal analysis is in a non-legalese way.
I think any of the firms that are municipal firms that you might be interviewing would probably have competence in achieving that. I mean, municipal firms are, you know, we're not, we're not downtown Boston litigation firms that, that are all about the case law. There, there's an art to representing municipalities, attending town meetings, attending meetings of ZBAs and planning boards and whatnot, that's a lot different than the art of being in the courtroom. When you're arguing with a judge, you're expected to have those cases at the tip of your tongue and to be able to cite a binding precedent. And you need to do that, and the legal memos you're preparing or the motions that you're drafting on behalf of our municipal clientele, you can't be doing that at a town meeting, because the faces gloss over and people don't understand it. Something we try and do to maybe get ahead of this a bit, and it's referenced, I just turned because I know it always is, but it's referenced in all of the fee proposals, the different options we provided to the town, is we offer up to two training seminars a year. And if it's within the flat fee, it's, it's at no cost, of course, it's incorporated within the flat fee. And those can be on topics that you determine. And so there are some that we do with, with, with some, you know, recurring frequency, like open meeting law, public records law, conflict of interest law. I probably give one of those seminars every, you know, one every six months in one of our municipalities, and sometimes we combine them, and I'm scheduled to do one in September, in fact, in one of our towns where I'm going to be covering all three of those topics in one, two-hour session. We have a PowerPoint that we prepare, and it's a bit of a training. We try and do that, but we also have received requests. I mean, I got a request last year from a community I represent that their planning board was having real difficulty with respect to maintaining decorum, just the, the basics of running a public meeting, and, and achieving consensus amongst board members, because there was a lot of sort of infighting within the board, and they said, can you help with this? And I said, I'm not a miracle worker, I don't know that I can fix the problem, but certainly we can do a training seminar that sort of walks them through, you know, some of the, the guidance that's offered maybe in Robert's Rules in terms of how to manage a municipal meeting, a parliamentary procedure type stuff, but also get into the particulars of what your bylaw requires in terms of site plan review, what the statutes require in terms of the, the, the planning board acting as special permit granting authority. And so we can do, we can do seminars in any topic you choose, and I think sometimes getting ahead of those things, it's not, not going to fix every problem, but the more informed your volunteers are, I mean, I, I'm always amazed, and I get this question often, that, you know, volunteers aren't, aren't required to attend any mandatory training. And I, I, I guess I get it, they're volunteers, they're giving of their time, how can we possibly ask more of them or, or make demands of them? But it's difficult when you've got members of a planning board, in some instances, zoning board, whatever it might be, that are relatively new, that don't have institutional knowledge or experience, and maybe no relevant experience to their, their land use role on one of these boards, and yet you're expecting them to, to act as if they're, you know, a land use attorney and to understand, okay, when we grant a special permit, we have to apply the seven-part test that's in our, our bylaw. And, you know, here, we have to make specific findings on each of those if we're going to grant the permit, but we can deny it based on any of these. They don't, they don't know this, and nobody teaches them this unless there's some form of training. So I think getting ahead of the problem pays, pays dividends on the backend, in terms of us having to defend a decision when it issues.
Thank you. Mr. Daley?
Thank you. So town council is sometimes called upon to provide their opinion in a public setting, may not be able to assert attorney-client privilege, if doing so may negatively impact the ability of the town meeting members or committee members to debate. So have you, how have you navigated these issues previously?
We've never had that problem. It's never come up. So I, I think that, you know, we're cognizant of what the role is of our client at that time, whether it's a zoning board or planning board, conservation commission, or a town meeting, or a select board, right? And so we couch our answers so that they're correct and legal, but keeping in mind what the ramifications are. And that's really important. It's one of the reasons why the folks that we have come to these meetings are mostly partners or who have significant years of experience, because it's, you cannot put a person who has not sat with boards before, who has not had the experience, and expect them to know how to respond in that situation, or even to be able to read the room, right? That's a really, you gain that by experience. And so you'll see sometimes, we'll have associates with us at meetings that you're not getting billed for if you're paying hourly, or that are not necessarily participating, because they're there to learn. And we have oftentimes, Adam and I, Jay, Liz, and whoever, have associates with us at meetings, or if it's a Zoom meeting, they'll be on the Zoom. And the goal is for them to learn, to read the room and understand what is happening in a room in addition to how you respond to that. And that's not something you can learn in a book, you have to learn that in person. And I think that we're quite capable of doing that, and it's walking a tightrope. We have our legal and ethical obligations, obviously, but our job is also to represent our client, and so we have to be careful in doing that.
Lisa made a comment a moment ago about hoping to not have to speak at town meeting, and of course, we're comfortable speaking at town meeting, but the idea is that we've done the preparatory work, that it's not necessary. And I, and I say that because, to your question, in an ideal world, that's not going to happen all that often, where we're asked for a question that we haven't anticipated in advance. It's going to happen from time to time, you can't avoid it, but it's rare. And, and I attend, Lisa attends probably more than I do, but I attend 12, 10, 12, 14 town meetings every, every April to June, and then, and then again in the fall. And so, and, and thinking back just to this last town meeting season, I can't think of an instance where I was asked a question that we hadn't anticipated in advance at the pre-town meeting that we held, or the discussions that I'd had with the town administrator or town manager, or the meetings I'd had with the select board in preparation for a town meeting. We knew what the issues were going to be, and so we prepared, okay, somebody's going to ask this, somebody's going to ask that, somebody might have this question. And so we had those answers ready, or we knew what they were going to be, so that we weren't caught off guard, having to give someone an opinion on the fly that hadn't been discussed previously.
It's an apprenticeship, you're defining an apprenticeship without even using the word.
Right.
So this is kind of a, this is maybe a little bit of a curveball question, but if you could think of an instance or a time where you initially provided some advice, but then later, maybe after consultation with colleagues or others, determined a different approach was warranted, then how did you deal with that situation and communicate that to your, to the client?
Yeah, sure. I mean, you know, we can't always be right, you know, I would be a liar if I sat in here, or a fool if I sat here and said I had all the answers and could, would always be right. But I think that probably, you know, the initial advice might be correct, it might not, but be the best advice. And so I would pick up the phone and call whoever it was that I gave it to, right? And say, hey, look, I was talking this over with my colleague, you needed an answer right away, I gave you the answer, but I was talking it over with my colleague, and we think this might be a better approach. You got to pick up the phone and call somebody, you know? It's one of the things I, I learned over the years, but I always tell our new associates when they come in to us, right? If you make a mistake, it's not the end of the world, right? In our, in our line of work, nobody's dying and nobody's going to jail, right? And so you need to own up to that, you need to tell us you made a mistake, right? So it's no different, if I say something to a client, I hope it's not completely wrong, it may not be the best direction, but I would immediately pick up the phone and say, hey, look, we, we went back and looked at this, and here's a better way to do this. You might want to consider this, happy to have a further conversation. And so whether it was the select board, or the town administrator, or the DVW director, or the building inspector, we'd just pick up the phone and have the conversation.
I, I can give you a specific instance, although I'm not going to name clients or, or matters, but, but I'm representing, we're representing a community as, as special counsel, and we're involved in litigation, as is the community's insurance council, because there are counts that are handled by insurance or, or subject to coverage, and, and a couple of councils aren't. And we were discussing a potential approach, I gave advice to the municipality as to how I would, the approach I would opt for with respect to filing a particular motion, got the go-ahead. And then in further consultation in the weeks to follow with insurance council, insurance council had a different approach and a different suggestion, and it was not even necessarily the matters for which insurance council had been engaged, but it was the matters for which I was representing the community, and I am representing the community. And I said to myself, well, that's a better approach, right? That's, it's a better approach, and I, I think that there are more pros to that. And so I had a communication with the town manager and with the, in this instance, the town planner, and said, I've talked it over with insurance council, and I think we go at it this way, it's better than the way that I had proposed it originally. Both ways probably would have worked, but I think that the pros outweigh the cons with respect to going this route instead of that route, not afraid to be corrected or to recognize that there's a better approach out there, and that's the approach that we're, that we're taking.
Mr. Wells, you want to do our final question?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm sure you've, you've definitely done your homework, and, you know, we've had the I'm sure you've done, you've definitely done your homework, and, you know, we've had the same law firm here for over 35 years. As I described in a previous, previous interview, I was a rookie police officer when that firm came on board.
You're young.
Yeah.
You were 10 when that happened, right?
Yeah, I was actually a union delegate and sat on the opposite side of the table from Labor Council at the time, making on board. They've been very entrenched here, as you can imagine. Town council, who was the primary face for most, 30 of those years anyway, he was a resident of the town as well, 24. They are, in a way, they become a part of the family, you know, they, council becomes part of the family, the fabric. I know I'm the oldest one here, I know you think I'm young, but it's hard to believe that I sat in the very same seat you sit in right now, the age of 23, to be interviewed, to be a police officer. I went on to become through all the ranks, I went up in chief for the last 10 years, which is distinct honor. My dad was chief back right after they were brought on board in the 1980s. So, if you were selected, how would you structure a transition period to make this change? Because every board, every committee, every resident, just above, if we were to change, understands what the current firm is, and how would you start to walk on that path if you were selected?
So, we have done transitions before with council that have been on for a really long time, even like, you know, independent, like in-house council that have been on for a really long time. And so, first of all, i- in our bar, it's a small world, right? So, we, we don't cross people, right? It does, you don't treat people poorly. Communities make decisions for different reasons, and so, we're professional about those kind of transitions. We come, we would meet with them, you know, we've done transitions where communities have had council for 25, 30, 35 years. I became a special counsel in the town of Marblehead after they had somebody there for the longest-serving town council in Massachusetts at the time, in 2007. And so, and I remember distinctly my first town meeting, I walked into the selectman's office, at a time, and he, he then passed away, cancer and passed away, and, and on the annual report was his photograph, right? So, I walked into the selectman's office, and I picked up the annual report, and I said to the woman who was sitting there, who also had been around for a really long time, and I said, this is rather intimidating, and she looked at me, she said it should be. I said, thanks, I appreciate that.
Just a quick follow-up to that.
Right. So, so that, so we, we would work with your existing town council to do a smooth transition. One of the first things that we would do is hold, ask Nick to get together a department head meeting to go in and to introduce our staff, it would, I would bring Jay in and maybe another one of our associates. We would introduce them to the staff, explain how we work, how we were made available. Of course, that's up to Nick and the board. And then, you know, we would go sit with your boards. Now, you know, we know some members of your board because we have done land use work with them in the past, right? So, we would go and, and sit maybe at a meeting with the board, introduce ourselves, tell them we're available. So, we try to do that transition as well. And same way with, you know, with the residents who might expect to see that person around at various things. You know, we're collegial, we're, we're all humans, and that's kind of the way we would do the transition.
You answered the follow-up.
Pardon me?
You answered the follow-up.
Okay, there you go.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any further questions from the board?
Not for me, thank you.
Well, thank you both very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you very much, it was great to come in.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your time.
My pleasure.
You want a new report or a new Bedford?
I'm heading out to the report.
I'm actually going out to a client, so.
Nice to meet you.
Very nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you as well. It's a beautiful town, Merrimack River, very pretty, oh yeah, very, very nice to meet you.
Very nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Well, so, we've done all three interviews, but we're, of course, missing a couple of our members. If memory serves, Mr. Daly, you didn't, you weren't able to join the first.
I didn't get the first one, no.
Mr. Cohen, I don't think he's joined any of them, and then, Ms. Hegarty has missed these past two. So, my suggestion might be that we ask both Mr. Cohen and Ms. Hegarty and Mr. Daly to watch the interviews of the meetings that they missed, and then, ideally, everybody's had these note-taking sheets, thanks to Mr. Milano, we could send our, maybe sort of consolidate our feedback to Nick, and then, I would suggest that we try to have a quick meeting if there's a clear, you know, and in the feedback, obviously, if you've got somebody who you think, you know, or firm that you thought was, was the standout, to identify that. And then, if there's a clear consensus among the board, that, that there's one firm or the other, that everyone really appreciated and, and thought would be the best fit, we could go ahead with that group. But I do think it would be worth another in-person discussion before making the final decision. Thoughts on the process, Mr. Chair?
So, that's why, I, my only addition to that would be particularly for the newer members, if, if any of them, I know we did not interview Murphy Hesse, but, I mean, for me, I don't need to, but if they want to talk, have a discussion with town council or anyone in the firm between now and then, just to clarify, go through, answer any questions, I mean, we've done a lot of here, it might be worthy to do that.
That's a great suggestion. So, Mr. Milano, maybe you can just send the update to all five of us, and then, optimally, we could just have like a 30-minute, I think it could be Zoom, doesn't have to be in person. Mr. Wells?
Can we deliberate and execute, or do we have to deliberate in this summative?
It should be an open session discussion.
That's fine, okay.
And I'll, I'll just note that I have done reference checks with staff and town administrators for, I've completed them for me, Tollerman, and Harrington Heap. I've reached out to a few colleagues around KP Law and have not connected quite yet, so I'll, I'll close the loop on that, and I'll, I'll share with the board kind of a summary of that feedback. And certainly, members are, are welcome to contact other towns and get some feedback from other member, from board members in other communities. It might be helpful once there's, if there is a consensus to just have the representative from the select board do a little bit of further follow-up to validate kind of that first, that top-ranked choice. But, you know, the communities that we've spoken to about the firm so far have all said positive things. It's, the, the recurring theme has always been like, you know, ensuring the availability and capacity of the team that you're looking for and, and setting up those expectations from the get-go. So, it's not been necessarily negative feedback, more of advice in terms of how to manage taking in this kind of a transition.
And I'll, I'll just add to that, this is a decision that I think all of us on the board take extraordinarily seriously, and we are giving this significant consideration. And, you know, we always welcome feedback from, from folks who are watching these interviews or have, have their own thoughts, but suffice to say that this is not something that we're proceeding with lightly. This is something that we understand, well, as Mr. Wells articulated earlier, certainly outlasts many of us on, in our service with, with, with the town of Milton, so, but, so I thank the members for their attendance here today. I thank Mr. Cohen and Ms. Hegarty for, for catching up on, on what they've missed out, and hopefully we'll have a resolution to this in the near future.
So, a quick point, are your feedback on the references, is that going to be something you're going to write and send to us?
I can send it via email. By the end of the week, I'd say. I've reached out to a number of firms, I'm still just kind of catching up with everybody.
Nick can update us like that, he, we just can't then discuss it by email, but he can send that around to us.
The chair is correct, if, if we were to make a change, the, the biggest aspect of this, I believe, is we're making a change that's going to be futuristic, it's going to live longer than all of us are, and this isn't something you want to be doing every year, you just don't. I mean, the questions that we ask, that, that the role that town council has played here historically is, they're entrenched in the community, and you need that. I wouldn't want to be doing this again. I don't want to be doing this, sure, I don't want to be doing it now, I wouldn't want to be doing it again, but, okay.
I know Mr. Wells has a short time, so, let's move to.
Chair, if I could, I just wanted to add that, so, for anybody interested, the Harrington Heap interview was conducted last week at 6:00 PM before the select board meeting. We did record it, and Milton Access TV will get that up online so that all of the interviews are publicly available as well, I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you for that, yeah, and we won't, we, obviously, we won't be making any decisions until all of those are, are public, publicly available.
Okay, you can handle the administrative, unless this, do we need a vote on it?
We need you for a courtroom. Yeah. Just, we'll do it very quickly. So, on discussion update number five, Fall Town Special Meeting Potential Warrant Articles, article on the General Bylaws Amendment for Chapter 105, Alcohol on Town Property. Mr. Milano, I know you were going to send edits to Mr. Wells.
Yes, will do.
Actually, I'll come in tomorrow after town, what, we have landing in the morning?
Yep.
I'll come in after that.
That's fine.
And then, is it feasible for us to send a draft article to the warrant committee so they have an idea of what's coming down the pike, even if they haven't approved it? So, that probably would be my recommendation.
Okay.
Just so that they can at least start to get eyes on it. And then, Article, General Bylaws Amendment, Light Trespass, Mr. Milano?
Thank you, I had recirculated the final edits that were presented by Aaron Bradley and Sean O'Rourke for this. We had talked about it very briefly at our meeting last week.
Yeah, so I'm willing to take a, a motion to put this on the.
I'll make, I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's on the warrant, and I think that was all that we wanted to do for the warrant for now, because we know that we, the Climate Action Planning Committee has submitted an article already, which they have the right to do. We will discuss that article when folks have had a chance to, you know, to, to review it, and the school building committee also has the ability to submit, the school building committee has the ability to submit an article as well, they've done that. There is, is a very simple adjustment, we can discuss that as a board, whether we endorse it or not at a future date. And then, this MPIC, is anything on that, Mr. Milano?
They, they're required to do a report to the select board, planning board, and town meeting, so they'll plan to do that. I'm still waiting on specifics in terms of what the article may additionally cover. The planning board is working through a signed bylaw amendment and some potential other articles, so we'll keep the select board posted on, on those.
Okay, I think that summarizes our warrant discussion. Is that right, Mr. Milano? Okay, great. Moving on to number six.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Go for it.
I'm going to make a motion to approve use of the town gazebo for us for the Milton Health Department and the Milton Coalition on Thursday, August 28, 2025, from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM, a recognition, recognition of International Overdose Awareness Day. And then, second, First Parish of Milton on Sunday, September 21, 2025, from 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM for town-wide observances of SUN, capital S-U-N, in SUN, a nationwide initiative to highlight, promote solar and wind, wind energy.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, we're okay to have that as a combined motion for both of us, too? Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
And then, we have.
There's the last one, item seven, I want to make a motion to approve the use of Manning Park for the Milton Chamber of Commerce and Milton Arts on Friday, September 5, September 2025, from 4:30 to 7:30 for back-to-business, a community celebration.
I'll second.
Just the only further discussion on that is, if you come to this, you will be able to hear your select board chair perform, so.
What, do you want cash?
No, no, I want everyone to come out, and, actually, maybe I shouldn't say that because that might not incentivize people to be there, but this is a great event, it was a great event last year, too.
Bless you.
Any further discussion?
No, that's it.
All right, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right, we're going to move our minutes discussion, which we know that Mr. Cohen feels passionately about, to the next meeting that he is able to attend. So, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much, we are adjourned.